Welcome to the Tuesday, October 12th. Special call to City Council Meeting. Call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council President Lyda.
Here.
Councilwoman Posey.
Here.
Councilmember Sweeney. Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy. Councilmember Middlebrooks.
Here.
Councilmember McClinton.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. We are here to consider two resolutions. We'll begin with item number three, Resolution Number 6559-21. Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares certain needed repairs to city properties as an emergency and authorizes such emergency repairs.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Mr. President, I move for resolution of number, approval of Resolution Number 6559-21.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and second. Mr. Rice, if you would walk us through this, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to make comments that are relevant to both of the resolutions on your agenda for this morning. So first of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about public assistance and individual assistance. We know that Wednesday night's storm was unprecedented, and we have a tremendous number of homes and families affected across the city. We have impact to public infrastructure and private property as well. We had a conversation with Jefferson County EMA yesterday, and they've sent us a tremendous amount of information. They're working hard, as is Shelby County and all the counties and the State Emergency Management Agency, to achieve federal disaster declaration for this storm. So there are financial thresholds that have to be met in each county, and then there's a total threshold that has to be met statewide. And it's very important that we get good data and information. We are submitting our public data from the city, from the damage that we've seen so far, and preliminary cost estimates. We'll continue to revise that. But we're working with EMA to provide a process to gather information about private damage, about flooded basements and things that occurred on private property, so that that can be counted in. There is some individual assistance available, even if there is not a federal declaration, but there is enhanced assistance available, of course, if there is a federal declaration. So it's in everybody's best interest to try to gather, excuse me, gather that information and get it submitted. There are differing pieces of information out there about how to submit your claim and who to talk to. We're pulling some things together, and Ms. Posey will be putting out something comprehensive to the community to say this is the best way to report, to be sure that it's all submitted and collated. We'll have city staff that will go out and assist people with assessments, even if some of the damage has already been cleaned up, because we know a lot of people have spent the last six days trying to remedy this and at least get their home livable. That's okay. We would encourage people that might have taken any pictures or video during the event, of course, please save that. That can be an integral part of a damage claim that we'll be going forward. So today, we've got a couple of resolutions that deal with the public infrastructure side. As you're well aware, you know, we operate under the state bid process, but there are exceptions for emergencies. And so we're asking for you to take action on two different resolutions. Everything that we're bringing you today is a direct result of the October 6th flood, but this doesn't represent the total drainage efforts on behalf of the city. Of course, there are other projects that are already underway. You approved some additional drainage-related work in this current fiscal year budget. There will be future projects to be funded. Some of those specifically are a result of the Green Valley Drainage Study, which is wrapped up. And then, of course, there are possible future projects that could arise still related to October 6th. We don't know that we have visibility on everything. As late as last night, we were here for a meeting, and people were still sending in reports of roadway damage that we hadn't been made aware of yet. So the engineering staff is out today taking a look at some of that. So there will be more. This is not the sum total of what you'll be asked to consider related to this event. I do want to make a quick comment about the engineering staff. We know what our first responders did. We know what Public Works did. Our folks from engineering have been out since Wednesday night, and they worked through the weekend and were up here with us until nine o'clock last night. I know, Mr. Shaw, you were in that meeting with us. So I think that they've performed magnificently. That's not a big department. It's about five people, and they've been out in the field doing a lot of work in a short period of time to bring this information to you this morning. The first resolution is a request, I believe the first was just a request for a declaration of emergency. I may have gotten them in reverse order. But there is a subset of repairs that need to be made in the interest of public safety and health on public roadways. There are areas where culverts have been damaged, we're concerned. There are areas where the road has been washed away. Those are things that need to be addressed with speed, and so it allows you to declare a public emergency under the statute, and then we can proceed with a modified bid process under the state bid law, which is intended to expedite these repairs. The second resolution deals with this in two parts. It's also a declaration of emergency for a set of repairs, but in these cases, we also need a declaration of public purpose. And so the reason for that is, in order for us to take tax dollars and do any work outside of public right-of-way, the council has to declare a public purpose. So in several of these cases, we can go to the location, and we can make the isolated repair on a city roadway, but if we don't remedy a condition which is off of the adjacent right-of-way, then we anticipate that damage will occur again. So any kind of catastrophic flood like occurred last week changes the landscape, literally in some locations, and it changes, certainly changes the flow path of water for future rain events. So we wouldn't have to have another October 6th rainfall to continue to damage our infrastructure because of changes that have occurred in ditches and underground systems. So there are some situations where we need to repair the road, but we also need to go somewhat upstream and make some remediation so that that same damage doesn't occur again. So you can see, I think, attachments or exhibits to both of those resolutions, and they list the cases that I'm referring to. It's important to note that for the public purpose declaration, the resolutions are worded such that all the repairs are necessary to protect public infrastructure from further damage, that these are intended to be one-time repairs only related to the October 6th event, and that there's no assumption of future maintenance in those locations. In terms of costs, you have very best estimates, but we know that they will change. So it's been impossible, as you can imagine, with the amount of damage around the metro area to get contractors out, and certainly to get three quotes at each one of these locations. So the engineering staff has taken industry-standard calculations and tried to estimate rebuilding, repiping, repaving, those kind of things. And then we have built in some cushion. We do, quite frankly, we expect several of these projects to exceed the cost that you see stated. All you're asking to approve today is the dollar figures you see on a not-to-exceed basis, so that is a hard cap. And then, as we continue to refine and get quotations, we'll be back to you with a formal budget amendment. It was Ms. Bolt's recommendation that we not try to amend the budget this morning, because we'll just be amending it again. And we concur with that. And so if you're comfortable with a not-to-exceed basis, we can get started on quotes, and we can start mobilizing these repairs, and then we'll be back to you with a formal budget amendment before we start paying any bills. So both parts of appropriation and allocation will be satisfied at the right point in time. And I think that's it. And certainly, I'm here, Mr. Reeves is here, Mr. Aldaka, and the rest of the staff, or any questions that you might have.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Exhibit one under Resolution 655921 lists five properties. Can you go through each one and give us a rundown of the repairs? Maybe bring up a map of where these are located?
I'll defer to Mr. Reeves to talk about the specific repairs.
Yes.
Good morning, Dr. Middlebrooks. I apologize, I do not have a map or any documentation to share with you, but I can give you an update on what the repairs are at these locations. At Sheffield Court, there are damages to the right-of-way, or, excuse me, damages to city property. The city actually owns 1435 Sheffield Court, and that's a parcel of land where the creek runs through. There's a landslide on that parcel. There are several trees down, debris in the creek, so we need to go in and remedy that, remove that. Marywood Lane, Pine Dell Lane, these are additional funds. The city currently has a project ongoing to, that we were actually preparing to go out to bid very soon. Additional damage were done downstream in that same culvert on this property. So we feel like we need to re-engineer that, possibly. The original plans at this location, we were grout-filling the existing pipe, so we didn't have to remove it, and then we were installing a new one. But with the damages from this event, we feel like that we may have to re-engineer that and actually excavate that existing pipe to prevent any further damages.
Mr. Reeves, is this the sinkhole situation?
Yes, sir, it is. And the easement on that property was accepted by the city council for maintenance years ago. Lockridge Drive, 3401, there's some damages to the culvert at that location. The floodwater is over top of the road. We had recently restabilized the slope in that area. The turbulence of those floodwaters were so much that the repair work that we just actually completed a few weeks ago was removed and damaged, so we got to go back and not only address the issues with the road where it's undermined the curb and gutter, the inlet, but also re-establish that slope adjacent to that creek in that area. That is also an easement that is maintained and accepted by the city. Pinehurst Drive, 1808 Hummingbird Lane, there's damages to a headwall and inlet just adjacent to the roadway in that area. That's in the right-of-way, so we will not be on anyone's property doing those repairs. River Chase Parkway West, adjacent to Fox Creek, that was just a location. That's the bridge where the accident occurred earlier last week. There's damages to the guard rail. There's a slope adjacent to the bridge that was washed and filled that we need to repair at that location as well.
Mr. Reeves, just to go back to Pine Dell Way one more time. I believe that was originally approved in 2018 for repair work. I'm just questioning, what's the delay on that?
Yes, sir. It was approved in 2018, and unfortunately, that project was delayed for several reasons. The gentleman that was in charge of that passed away, so he got delayed during his health issues. And then last year, it was delayed again because of the COVID issues. So we did, you know, last year, or previous, I don't remember the exact date. This was one of our Group One projects that was approved by the council that was originally deferred during COVID, and that's why we were re-establishing and rebidding that at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Middlebrooks. Any other questions from the council, comments? We will open it up to questions or comments from the public about these particular five properties. The resolution, as Mr. Rice stated and as the attorney read, is declaring certain needs repairs to city properties as an emergency and authorizing such emergency repairs for these five properties that we see in front of us. Are there any questions or comments about these five properties? Yes, sir. If you would come down and give us your name and address, we'd be happy to hear from
My name is Alan Callaway. I live at 4846 Sulfur Springs Road, directly beneath the drain of 465 Marywood Lane, 4801 Pine Dell Way. My home is the recipient of that sinkhole and all of the grout, the rocks, the dirt, everything. All of the neighbors that have lived in the neighborhood longer than I have have never seen any kind of drainage like they've seen over the last year. My pipe that is in my personal property, and the engineers have said is my responsibility to maintain, is constantly full of the debris from that sinkhole. So I'm glad that this has been on the docket for three years to be repaired, but the lack of having it maintained and repaired has caused my property to basically be washed away now. I've had fence damage, yard damage. Nobody can even give me a bid for contractual work to maintain it. So I would plead that y'all would please fix this, and if you can fix the drain where it's supposed to, intended to go, that would certainly help my family.
Thank you, Mr. Callaway.
Maintain Sulfur Springs Road.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments?
Hi, I'm Andrea Peoned. I'm at 3501 Ridge Crest Drive, which is near Lockridge Drive. We live right by Little Shades Creek, a Caba River feeder, and we just reported our third loss in six months since May 6th. We begged the city for a very long time to come and help us clean that creek out, because we don't own it. Actually, John Lyda was the only one that was able to get us a tree cut down that was not on our property. It's just been very frustrating, because we can't, we've lived there 17 years, and we had a flood eight years ago, and then three very damaging, severe flooding since May 6th, Wednesday being the worst we've ever seen. So I just beg you to look at Little Shades Creek and how the water is flooding now. I talked to FEMA last week, our Region 4 FEMA rep, and I'm supposed to be talking with somebody on the city today, Gilbert, I think, through an email. We got to do something, because we are now in a floodway versus a floodplain, is what we've been told by every single person that's looked at the map. Our property is, for lack of a better term, useless. We need somebody to do something. So I just needed to at least plead to you, just like the man before me, please look at every property, because ours is very damaging. So, thank you.
And I know, thank you, ma'am. I know there are many of you here that would probably like to speak about properties that aren't listed here. Monday night of next week, October 18th, at 6:00, we'll have a regular city council meeting where we will have an open public comment question period. So you're invited back on Monday night, 6:00, for our regular meeting, where at the end of that meeting, we will have open comment and public input for that. Any other comments or questions about these five?
My name is Matt Winter. I own property at 3412 Flintshire Drive. I've been in a federal lawsuit with U.S. Steel for years now. I've begged the city to help solve this problem. ADEM has come out there, fined them, consent orders, nothing's being done. When this rain event happened, they had a massive failure of infrastructure up there. Box culverts, eight feet high, 10 feet wide, went tumbling like dice. Is the city going to do something about U.S. Steel's development of the preserve and their water control issues? That's what I want to know. That is directly related to property number one, Sheffield Court. A massive mud-filled-water tidal wave went down Hurricane Branch and eroded the backside of Sheffield Court, went all across Alseer Road, and flooded many of those townhomes down there. This happened in 2014.
Where is Sheffield Court? I'm sorry, educate me.
The townhome's on Alseer Road, right there before you get to Chapel Road.
Yes. That's Sheffield?
It's behind that.
Gotcha.
The city has got to control U.S. Steel's development. They have to. This is a mess.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Morning. My name is Carl Tounidas, and I live at 1735 Mountain Lane Road over in River Chase. And my issue is, I think the city council and the mayor's office had allocated what they're going to do away with leaf pickup and leaf cleanup, which affects all these properties. So I guess my point is, I think whoever made that decision is kind of penny wise and pound foolish, because all these leaves are going to be going down into the sewers and going to create extra maintenance problems and extra cost for the city. Not to mention the possibility of open-up liability for the city in terms of the leaves accumulating on the streets. I ran into the mayor over at another venue, and I brought this up to him, so I appreciate getting a second opportunity to do that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ali Daniels. I live at 4921 Sulfur Springs Road. I've been reporting to the city about sinkholes and storm drain issues since 2018. Engineers has been out. I've only seen them take pictures, but I've never seen them actually run some kind of test to find out exactly what the issue is. However, we have developed eyesores of sinkholes. My property, my neighbor's property across the street, just developed more sinkholes. My neighbor's directly next door, because of issues next to our storm drains, we had a massive flood in that area, and his home suffered heavy flooding within his home. As for us and the neighbors across the street, we suffered sinkholes. We haven't been made aware exactly what the issue is as to why there are sinkholes and the flood that took place this past week as well has extended. We would like to know that. I'll try reaching out. I know that the city's been really, really busy with other issues and other affairs. However, we would like to know exactly as to the reason why these sinkholes are developing, because you could look down inside the sinkholes, which are about six to seven feet deep, and you could see water running beneath the actual pipes. And that's an issue, and water runs all the time, not just when it rains, but we have water that is running all the time. From understanding, the actual storm drain is connected probably to a spring of some sort that's allowing that water to run all the time as well. So though the sinkholes on my property seem to be a little bit a distance from the actual storm drain in the street, we seem to think that there may be an issue that may be somewhere near the storm drain sites in the street. We don't know, because we haven't been made aware. And again, like I said, we reported since 2018 that we've had some issues with storm drains and sinkholes, and we would just like to get more information about it. We haven't been made aware exactly what the problem is. I did see some officials, I don't know if they were city officials, they came out to the property, took pictures. But again, we've never seen an extensive run or test that, and I don't know what they're really consist of, I'm not an engineer, but I've never seen anyone get down and dirty to try to figure out exactly what the problem is. We would get someone to come on the property, take pictures, and say, ah, it's not our problem. And that's about it. It has to be a little bit further and deeper than that. And I think that we deserve answers, to see exactly where we need to go as far as repairs, whether the city can help with the repairs, or this is something that we definitely have to do on our own. We are unclear about that. We would like to get that help.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Any other?
Hi, my name's Rob Belaz. I live at 427 Pine Way Drive. So comments related to the gentleman who just spoke and also the property number two, we've also had very constant water running for like the past several years through drainage that comes, my neighbors behind me down through a culvert. Went up to Magnolia Grove yesterday and looked at the retaining pond. It was dead empty. So I don't know where all that water went in three days, but I assume there should have still been some water in the retaining pond. So I don't know if that's possibly a source for this large amount of underground water that we've got with sinkholes and other things. Is that something that the city could look at?
Mr. Reeves, would you describe what a retention pond, how it's supposed to work, and?
Yes, sir. I believe the pond he's referring to is actually a detention pond. It retains water during the floods. So, and that is on private property, should be maintained by the HOA of that subdivision. We would be glad to look at that as time permits and notify them if we see any issues with that and make them aware of it.
Very good. Thank you.
Would appreciate that. Thank you. Is that normal for a detention pond with that much rain to be empty in three days?
It's very possible. It is. You know, it's hard to say. You know, a retention pond will hold water. Detention ponds are designed to release the water slowly. So it's very possible that the water has, you know, done what it was designed to do.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We have a motion and second for approval of Resolution Number 6559-21. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. And I'll take up item number four, Resolution Number 6562-21. Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares certain needed repairs as an emergency, authorizes such emergency repairs, and declares a public purpose for the repairs of adjacent private property integral to the proper repair of public property.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution Number 6562-21.
Second. We have a motion and second. As Mr. Rice indicated earlier, he described these two, they somewhat go hand in hand. Any questions or comments from the council regarding the declaration of public purpose?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'll ask the same question as before. If Mr. Reeves could give a summary of repairs?
Yes, sir. At 1317 Atkins Trim Boulevard, there's a pipe collapsed in the right-of-way adjacent to the inlets. That pipe will have to be replaced, and the inlets addressed as well. On Paulette Drive, the overflow of the road buckled the road, so the asphalt inlets will need to be repaired. The pipes underneath the roadway will need to be cleaned out as well. Adjacent to that ditch upstream, that's where we'll need to get off of the right-of-way onto private property to remediate that ditch. The ditch adjacent to the street is completely, you can't even tell there's a ditch there. I know some of you may have seen that. On Rockview Lane, there are several sinkholes and pipes that have collapsed in the right-of-way. We also have a culvert at the intersection of Rockview Lane and Maiden Lane that has failed and needs to be replaced. Lockridge Trail, adjacent to that, the culvert was blocked, it's sediment-filled as well. We need to clean that up. There's also debris upstream and adjacent downstream that would need to be removed so the next rain event doesn't impede the culverts on that street and cause additional flooding. Deodera Drive and Star Lake, adjacent to the golf course, the Star Lake did over top of the road again and done damages to that shoulder. So we need to address that. There was an 18 to 24-inch drop-off from the road down to that shoulder, so it's a very dangerous situation. So those funding is to address that in that area.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I missed Long Meadow Drive. I'm sorry about that. The stormwater also overtopped that road or actually got underneath the overlay on that road, pushed the overlay wearing surface up, and it's damaged. It needs to be removed, and there's also some damage to an inlet on that street that needs to be repaired.
Thank you, Dr. Middlebrooks and Mr. Reeves. Any other questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public about any of these six areas?
My name is Matthew Smith. I live on 1837 Paulette Drive. It's adjacent to where you're talking about, the ditch, and I've been able to see. For years and years and years, since 2018, I have documentation where I've requested this be repaired. This has gotten worse and worse due to erosion and also due to the stormwater drains. Those drains cannot handle the amount of volume coming down. It's coming down from Patton Chapel Road. The way I know this is I personally walked through all the way up that ditch the other day and saw every little bit of it. There's health hazards along the way, too, meaning power lines down as well. Also, one of my questions regarding, there is sewer. The sewer backed up to my family's house the other night, about a foot and a half, two foot of water. I had to clean up. Me and my little boy had to stay there for the evening, along with my wife, because we could not get out due to the water flow. I like Hoover. I love living in Hoover, but this is unacceptable, and we are better than this as a city, and we deserve better than this as residents. This flows down. There's no excuse anymore. Absolutely no excuse any longer on this. I see all this, and I read all this. This is great to see, but what's the timeline? I think we deserve that. I want documentation of this shared with every single person in this room today. We deserve better than this. You talked about not being able to see on one side of that ditch. It's gone to the other side, too. I picked it up with my bare hands, sir, and I can't use an excavator, you know? I don't own one, not going to pick it up. And that also shouldn't be our responsibility there, too. But also, keep in mind, that's flowing down and damaging other people's property on Napier, on other roads, too. But as a city, we are better than this, and as residents, we deserve more, and we deserve better. I'm asking you and pleading with you to fix this issue finally, once and for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
My name is Sheree Beavers, and I live close to Deodera Drive. And the ditch next to our house is pretty much the one that flows all the way down to Sanders Southland Drive. We've had this problem for a very long time. I have been dealing with I have been dealing with this since two thousand fourteen. It has eroded three quarters of my property. And my property tax keeps going up and nothing's being done about this. I, I have had engineers come out and they have looked and looked and looked, but they have no idea how to fix this. The water runs up underneath our road on South Sanders. That road is, has a huge sinkhole, which it's gonna give away eventually. And I, I just, like I said, I've been complaining about this since two thousand fourteen. My yard is, there's no sense in my yard being three quarters of the way gone in my back. And our driveway is in terrible condition. We're about to lose our shed, which is up close to our driveway. And we're talking major damage. And nothing has been done to this because this floods every time we have these hard rains and it goes straight down the hill to Southland Drive. And I went by there the other day and I've noticed all the debris up against the rails. And this needs to be fixed. I mean, the, even the engineers have said, yeah, this is a real problem because the water has nowhere to go. And I know it's kind of petty, but my neighbor next door lost all her garbage cans. The water is so heavy. I have sinkholes all in my yard and I'm scared to walk around in my yard because I'm afraid I'm gonna step in one. And that's gonna be a problem. So I'd like somebody to look at this, too, because all that water rushes downhill and i- it's creating a bad situation for my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beavers. Yes, ma'am.
I need, I need her address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Beavers, may we get your address, please, ma'am?
Uh, six forty-one South Sanders Road.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenny Lou Plamondin. I live on Napier, which is below Paulette Drive. Um, I'm at eighteen sixteen Napier Drive. My address has a huge sinkhole that has made it to the Hoover City Agenda in the past and been tabled. So fixing Paulette and those culverts is great. You're talking about going a little bit above, going a little bit below. If you don't fix Napier or the entire neighborhood, I am the bottom. I get everybody else's stuff. This last flood detached my air conditioner and took it down my driveway and tumped it sideways. So we couldn't repair it. I had to buy a whole new air conditioner. Those aren't cheap. The sinkhole, I have a forty-five year history in Hoover. Y'all used to fix this. My driveway's about to collapse. The entire downstairs of my house, which has a mother-in-law's apartment, it's not a three-two, it's a four-three, was flooded. That's with the sandbags, with the towels. These floods haven't started at my house until about the last five years. The sinkhole is an ongoing thing. That is a drainage connecting the sewer system, whatever it is. So I don't see how just fixing around Paulette, it's still gonna back up and overflow into Napier. Y'all have had the city engineer out, y'all have had me budgeted down to the penny and you table it. So we need to look at the big picture and not just certain roads. Because I've had ten to twenty thousand dollars worth of damage this time. So just keep that in mind, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, in the back?
My name is Marcy Hayes. I live on twenty-three oh five Brookline Drive, which is um, I'm gonna say it's really close to that Rockview Lane, but I'm concerned because our actually, actual creek that goes behind our home isn't listed as one of these properties. I know the mayor's been out to um check out our situation. We did contact Hoover in two thousand fourteen, I believe it was Rodney Long um that came out and um, you know, we have spent thirty-six thousand dollars remedying the situation in our home with pumps and those kinds of things. But this is a Hoover um situation. We have reached out for help previously and I just want to make sure that our creek um is on the radar as well. We had three houses that flooded, two houses that couldn't have left um due to the water flowing over the um creek area. We also have a little boy that has asthma um that we adopted through foster care and it's our goal to keep him safe and healthy. And um, we're concerned what is happening with the water that has been coming into our home. And so I just want to make sure when I'm looking at these addresses, I mean, I, I feel like that Rockview Lane, kind of all that ties in together. I'm not, you know, we're in our own little bubble, but it, it's definitely a Hoover issue. I have confidence that you guys will um take care of it and do what needs to be done, but all the property damage, you know, that's a thing, but we've got to get to the root of the problem, which I think is what, you know, you had said initially, like, we've got to get it fixed. Repairing is just gonna continue to happen because that's what we're doing on our own dollar right now, but we've got to get Hoover to do the thing.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Yes, sir. Mr. Morgan.
Good morning. My name is Mike Morgan, three four six two Cray Ridge Drive in Hoover. Uh, my question, and, and this concerns Paulette Drive. I'm two houses above uh Paulette Drive and the drainage ditch that caused the issue goes through the back of my property. And uh, my question concerns remediation of that drainage area, whether that will be a full-scale remediation, starting at the top of Patton Chapel and going all the way down and covering the Napier area as well, or whether it's going to be limited remediation, uh, which would probably have to start at Cray Ridge in the curve and go down to at least Paulette. Uh, so that, my concern is that that area get taken care of because I spend many an hour out in that drainage ditch, moving rocks, moving debris, to make sure it doesn't get further downstream to uh cause issues. So uh, that would be my question, the remediation process on that drainage ditch.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. It's my understanding, and Mr. Reeves confirm this for me, please, that the sixty-nine thousand dollars for item number two is for the property immediately adjacent to eighteen thirty-three Paulette?
Yes, sir. That's correct. It's not, not intended to address the whole drainage space.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. President, let me make a quick addition to that. There's a lot of this that we don't know yet. And so Mr. Reeves is correct, that figure is calculated on what we can see adjacent to public infrastructure. But as we start to work our way up the hill, the direction that you mentioned, we may encounter additional conditions that we think could be deleterious to public infrastructure. So then that's why we think we'll be back with revised quotations. So there's a lot more analysis that has to happen, um, probably on all of these, but certainly in the situation that uh Mr. Morgan mentions, because we just don't know yet. We've got to start working our way up that ditch line. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Mr. Posey, I think has a question. Mr. Rice.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would, a point that Mr. Morgan brought up that I wanted to, to ask you about as far as um probably talking to Melanie about this is, Mr. Morgan mentioned that he cleaned out the drain. Matt, you mentioned you clean out your drain, too. I know I lived on one of these uh where I had a drain in my backyard and a creek when I lived up, up on Campbell Drive and I had to keep that cleaned out. What can we do to put out information to citizens about how important it is to keep debris out of those drains, keep them, the ones that run through their backyard? Because I'm sure over time, that's what you're dealing with, is pileup, buildup of things over time, whether it flowed down or like you mentioned, it flowing down, everything like that. But I don't think a lot of people understand that. I know when I first moved into my house, I didn't understand that. And I talked to Rod, he came over to my house before I was on the council and we looked at everything and talked about it. Is there something we can do education-wise through Melanie, through somebody to get this information out of why this is important? Because the person lives downhill from you, is going to get all of the stuff that's in the drain today and it's all flowing downhill and then you have the flooding. Not that that has anything to do with the storm we had, because I live on top of the mountain and my yard flooded. But in terms of as we move forward, educating everyone about, please try to keep that area clear of debris, those drains, so they're functioning properly. So we don't get a buildup forty years down the road, fifty years down the road of this magnitude where a storm comes through this heavily and you just can't, there's nothing you can do about the drain because it's blocked.
Right. Yes, sir. We can certainly make our best efforts. You, your point is exactly right. This, this is definitely a situation where um our action or inaction has impact on our neighbors. And Mr. Reeves' staff could talk to you about whole trees, cut up trees sometime. And these are probably extreme examples, but every one of them has significant downstream impact where we've had, unfortunately, homeowners in some locations, I'm not saying this has occurred on Napier, Cray Ridge or any specific street, but some places around the city, they've had a tree service come out and take a tree down and rather than paying to have it hauled off, they've had it sectioned up and thrown in the drainage ditch behind their house. And that doesn't help anybody who's downstream because it just, eventually it just creates a dam. And it causes, I mean, you can imagine, it causes water to leave its flow path. Some of it is um just very long-term, over decades, as you mentioned, uh sedimentation that periodically those ditches have to be maintained. And if that doesn't happen, we see, and this is a great example, um, along the ditch that we're talking about, where, you know, the ditch is probably intended to be three to three and a half feet deep. And prior to Wednesday, there were spots where it was about eight or ten inches deep.
It was five feet deep.
Five feet deep. So it's uh, it's impossible for even a traditional rain event to be able to clear in the intended manner when you just don't have a ditch anymore. You basically have a chute, which is very narrow. And then, of course, when we have what happened Wednesday, I mean, all bets are off. So your, your point is correct. I mean, to the extent that we can try to influence and encourage and educate people, we can certainly do that. Because we have seen pretty egregious examples throughout the city of people use, sometimes using drainage structures as disposal features and that's clearly not what they were intended for.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. It's a great question. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Hi, I'm Carol Lewis. I live at eighteen forty-nine Mayflower Drive. I'm a neighbor to Mr. Morgan and I live above Paulette. And the main problem, to get to the root of the problem, it's not debris people are leaving, it's Patton Chapel Road. The widening of Patton Chapel Road is the problem. I was told by the city a few years ago that the reason there is more flooding is because the county could not afford to do the drainage properly from that road. And the city offered to kick in money to do that drainage properly. And the county said, no thanks. And the city allowed them to tie into our neighborhood. And the first widening was done at Frank and to Cray Ridge. And those culverts, I have looked in them myself, three culverts this big, tying into a twelve-inch pipe. I had five thousand dollars worth of drainage work done to my home and for four years I did not flood until the road was widened. And now the water actually comes from a totally different direction. It used to come from Mayflower off of Frank. Now it comes straight from Patton Chapel. It floods everything. I flooded five times this year, twice in one day. This last flood, unprecedented or not, doesn't matter, the flooding is worse. Uh, it does, it can be a normal rain and it still floods. I have two thousand pounds of sandbags against my garage door. It's been there all year, at least a year since last year. Um, the water didn't move the sandbags this time, but it busted in my garage door. Two panels of a sixteen-foot wide garage door. I'm about to have twelve thousand dollars worth of landscaping done. I was told, uh, it may have been Mr. Rice here, it may have been another engineer, I was told I needed to do my part. I don't have any open drains in my yard, so I have no, nothing to clean. Uh, we keep being told that it's personal property and if it's, the water is flooding on our personal property, that we are responsible. So if it's my personal property, I am not given the city permission to flood road water drainage onto my personal property.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I'm Joel Kelly, uh, one oh nine Highland Crest Parkway. And she sort of stole my thunder. And that's okay, because she spoke much elo- more eloquently than me. The, the, the problem that a lot of us are having is not so much that enhancements have been done, just like the, my problem started when they built houses on Alsea Road. Those about six new houses up there, which I'm not against that. The problem is, is that water has to go somewhere. And it goes down this big culvert down behind my house and through the drain under the yard, down below my house into a creek, which is not a creek anymore. It's about as flat as this floor in here because it's washed so much of it out. But it not only did that, but it caused a mudslide from my house down to the creek. And I've talked to people in the city, got a nice form letter, you know, that let me know that uh, as she said, that's my responsibility, my problem. I don't understand how it's my problem if city water or water that's diverted through a city pipe owned to my property and washes it away, um, I'm responsible for a fifty thousand dollar worth of damage. And um, you know, some of us are retired and fifty thousand dollars laying around, just not part of the, not part of the plan. But um, she's exactly right. When, when these things are done, or when, when widening of the road or whatever, they don't make a plan to say, okay, well, the water's gonna go through this pipe, where's it gonna end up? Doesn't matter to us, we're gonna put this on, you know, these six houses up here and they'll be nice. And they are. However, all the water runs through the pipe and down and then washes our property away. And, you know, I, I think just getting someone to take a look at it and say, you know, they, they could have put a bunch of big rocks down there, maybe in that creek to, to um avert it, you know? I can't do something like that, but I guess I'm gonna have to now because my backyard eroded away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Like I said, I'm Matthew Smith. I live on Paulette Drive. To be clear, I looked, it has been nine storms like this this year. It's not a hundred-year storm, it's not a thousand-year storm anymore. It's been nine times this has happened. Multiple times we've all complained, multiple times we've sent stuff to you guys. A lot of the time it falls on deaf ears. It's very unfortunate. Like I said, we deserve better. So, you know, if we're supposed to pick up all this stuff and maintain it, Mr. Posey, you asked about ways we can do that. Eventually, it becomes almost near impossible when this is happening over and over and over. So the remedy would be on y'all fixing it and not putting lipstick on a pig, but coming through here and actually doing what needs to be repaired and done. Also, I have another question to ask you gentlemen. So with the sewer water that backed up into my house and my property and other properties, and with WVTM listing a no contact for sewer water that's out there as well, what is the plan to trace the sewer water and make sure we're in the clear on that for many of our properties so we can be, feel safe with our families?
The sewer issue, Mr. Reeves, correct me if I'm wrong, would that be a Jefferson County sewer issue?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Smith, we would need to direct you and we could be glad to connect you.
I've talked to the county.
Thank you. That's the county issue.
I've talked to them, so. Bottom line, though, the county has said a lot lies on y'all, y'all say a lot lies on the county. Like I said earlier, we deserve better as residents here in the city of Hoover and y'all can do better.
The last resolution passed with a five-zero vote, Mr. Smith. I anticipate this next one will also pass with a five-zero vote and the conversation today supports that. I think the council hears that and on Monday of next week, we will have another meeting. And again, I know there are property owners who would like to speak to addresses not addressed here and we look forward to hearing that on Monday night. Are there any other question or comments about these particular properties before we take a vote? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Richard Parker. First of all, I'd like to say thanks for opening up to uh, let us speak out. I know we first thought that we were not gonna be able to say anything today, so thank you for that. And also thank you for giving us the privilege to go away from some of those properties, which mine is one of those. And the only reason why I'm speaking today instead of Monday is there is a safety and health issue right now on my property and in my neighborhood. I live on twenty-six eighteen Creekview Drive and I have several of the neighbors here today for that. Uh, it feeds into the It feeds into all the creeks and goes through Hoover Country Club, which I did walk that yesterday with my wife. I've been living in Hoover since I was 12 years old. I'll be 65 coming up in about six months. Been paying taxes, been a good Hoover resident, obeyed the law, paid my taxes, and it just is really frustrating. If I've heard it once, I've heard it 10 times, maybe 100 times today. I've contacted their organization. They sent me a nice letter, and in the 20-something years, 28 years I've lived in this current house, Hoover has actually come in and done some work, you know, with Allen Paid and some of the people that came, and actually cleared out the creek and did some maintenance. So getting back to your comment a minute ago, maintenance is great for the homeowner, but maintenance needs to be done by the city of Hoover. And I think that, I think that's probably the biggest, if I had to say, that's probably the biggest solution you can look at down the road in your future budgets, is saying, hey, how do we get these, you know? My wife and I are throwing rocks. I mean, we're almost 65 years old, throwing rocks on the side of the bank right now. Why? Because the rest of our yard that we've lost this past week, $50,000 worth of yard, is gone, so we're trying to save our house now. So it's really frustrating. It's almost like the Village Creek, I don't know if y'all remember that term back years ago, that everybody talked about and talked about and talked about, and said, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? What are we going to do? Finally, I think they fixed it. You never hear it on the news, at least. And so, are we going to be the next Village Creek in the city of Hoover? Green Valley and this part of Hoover is the founding part of our city, and we should take care of. Most of us, you look at this crowd, are probably over 50, at least, maybe over 60. And, you know, this is our biggest investment that we have. We have 401Ks, but this is, I know it's my biggest investment that I have in my life savings, and it's about to go down the toilet. Why? Because something is not being done. And I'm not picking on your committee, but something, something needs to change. I mean, if you keep doing the same thing, getting the same results, something's not right. So, again, I appreciate you letting me speak, but I think it's health and safety. I know our sewer's leaking right now. The county was out, you know, the Water Works Board, and said, oh, yeah, the pipe has shifted over, and, yeah, but it looks like it's okay. And then, the sleeve is off of the manhole cover. Don't worry about that. It's still in good shape. It flipped the manhole off because of so much sewer pressure. I think the way that is done is when Hoover did this many years ago, I think sewer and also storm goes through that same pipe back in that neck of the woods. I don't know if you know that or not. So seepage is happening constantly down in that area when we do have floods, so I think that's it. There are power poles all through that creek right now. My creek used to be like 20 feet wide. It's now over 100 feet wide right now, and it's flat. The topography's changed. I used to be able to look down at the creek. I'm on the creek now. So that's coming down Creekview Drive. It's heading your way. So again, thank you for taking care of these, and thank you so much for listening. I know I went a little long, but I just think this is a safety issue with, my trees have been uprooted, as far as the roots are no longer on them, so they're going to follow the power lines, they're going to follow my grandkids, they're going to follow me. You know, the sewer is messed up, not to mention the personal property. That hits really home to me, but I think the safety part is something we need to make sure we do an analysis and say, hey, there's not sewer water in there. I've been told, when I called Hoover, we had a manhole cover flip off. Hoover said, check with the Birmingham Water Works Board. I called Birmingham Water Works Board, they said, go back to Hoover. So, anyway, I know I've gone long, but it's, again, thank you for letting us talk today. It really eliminates a lot of frustration we have.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Very well said. Thank you. We are ready to take a vote. I'll ask one last time, any questions about these six? We have a motion and second for approval of the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you so much for your attendance and for your comments, and we will gather again Monday night, and we are welcome back at 6 o'clock. We're adjourned.